Okay, this is our... Oh, wait for Mr. O'Connor. Thank you for coming, gentlemen. This is one of our annual rites of passage.
Yes, it is.
Just for the public edification, I'll ask you to each introduce yourself and your role in this process, I guess.
Sure, my name is Bill Mitchell. I'm the chief assessor from the City of Leamester.
Rick Dondero, assistant assessor, City of Leamester.
William Connor, assistant assessor, City of Leamester.
John Richard, city comptroller.
Mr. Mitchell, I guess I'll turn this over to you. And you've prepared a nice package for council that prepare us for this hearing?
I did.
And I'm thinking you're gonna probably wanna give us at least an overview of it.
Yeah, I will try and give you a quick overview. I know it's a lot of material to go over. I hope everybody had a chance to look at it, at least a little bit. It's 46 pages long of good math stuff and good, easy reading. So I will guide you through a summary that I had done to make it easy. Before we get started going through the booklet, I just wanna mention for anybody viewing at home, as always, that the classification hearing is to decide how the council may wanna shift the burden of taxes from one class of properties to another, or not. Okay, so it's, there's four ways we can do that. It's either by splitting the tax rate or keeping it at a single rate where all classes are taxed the same. And there's some other options. There's a small residential exemption, there's a commercial exemption, and there's also an open space discount factor that can be applied. Those are the four choices in front of the council tonight. And also, this booklet that you have in front of you tonight is also going to be on the assessor's website. Had a couple hiccups trying to get it on there for tonight's hearing this week, but we'll get it on there so people, the public, can view that as well. And also, the valuations are always gonna be on the website as well. And so we'll get those up as soon as we get the tax rate closer to being set by the Department of Local Services. So to guide you through the booklet tonight, the effective date, we always talk about timing here with the assessor's office, and a lot of people don't understand about their assessment versus their market value. We're always one year behind the market, we're always chasing it, so I like to point it out. It's a good opportunity to educate the public with this. The effective date of your assessment is gonna appear on your January 1st bill that you're going to receive as a Christmas present this year. Is gonna be the value determined as of January 1st, 2017. And so you'll see that on your fiscal year 18 bill. And the January billing is always the most important bill that you receive each year, because that's when you do receive a new tax rate, you receive a new assessment. It's also the time when you can come into our office, and if you feel as though your value is incorrect, that is the time to let us know if there's something that we might have missed, or if there's something that you, we haven't been out there in a while and need to update. It's always a time to come into our office and give us a chance to look at the value and look into it for you. And that's January 1st to February 1st, every year. So with that being said, keep that in mind, we're always one year behind the market. We have targeted what we call an assessment-to-sale ratio. Now that's, we compare our assessed values to our sale prices each year, and we will determine if we're gonna be at exactly 100% of market value, or depending upon what we see in the market and what's about to come, if we're gonna lag behind that a little bit. And as you know, the market has gone up for the last two, three years now, and so we're just slightly behind the market. We targeted a 96% valuation. That doesn't mean that every property's gonna be valued at 96% of its market value, but when you take 328 single-family homes and put them all in one group, there's gonna be some outliers, so we'll go through that as well. At this point, we had 331 single-family sales that sold this year. We did analyze all of them. There was an average sale price of $276,220 this year, which is up from last year. So if you can look at page seven of the booklet, you're going to see, it shows how the total valuation of this city has changed over the past 10 years. And obviously, you can see where the market's been and then how it's going now. On page eight, you'll see how the tax rate, what that's done over the past 10 years. And so valuations have something to do with the tax rate, but mostly it's the budget that drives the tax rate, and the values will either offset it one way or the other, and we'll go over that after as well. Throughout the book, you're gonna see references regarding classes of properties. And not everybody's an assessor, understands what, you know, what the classifications are, but the state does class five types of properties. There's the 100s, 200s, 300s, 400s, and 500s. And what that means is anything that begins with a number 1 is a residential property. Anything that begins with 2 or in the 200 class is open space. Anything that is in the 300 class, say 301, 302, whatever it may be, is a commercial property. And then 400s are industrial, and 500s are personal property. So as you go through the booklet, and you start looking at what these class codes, that's what they're pertaining to. If you look at page 12, you're going to see a comparison chart there for each one of these classes of properties. And so you're going to see what the single-family homes did this year. If you look from FY '17, there's a column highlighted in blue there at the top, and then if you look over to your right, there's an FY '18 column highlighted in blue. As you carry it over, if you look at one, if you look at these codes as you go down on the left-hand side, it does give you the code number and then the type of property it is. So right away, the single-family being the most predominant class in the city, we look at that, that has gone up 7.2% this year. That is a large increase for us this year. You know, it's been typically 4% to 5%, but I tell you, the market has been increasing a lot. Rick has done some research on this. I thought it was important that we outline not only the way we assess the properties, but also what we're seeing in the market. Rick has done all the sale reviews in the city each and every year. Anytime a property sells, we go out to inspect it, because we have to be sure that our data on that property is correct, because we're using those sales to value everybody else's property in the city. So Rick, if you want to explain what you found in the multiple listing service, I'll hand it over to you for a minute.
Sure. My position here as the assistant assessor in the City of Leamester is a unique one. I'm born and raised in the City of Leamester. I've been an appraiser roughly 20 years. So over the last couple months, I spent some time doing some research, and I kinda wanted to, as a concerned citizen, thinking outside of the box as the assistant assessor here, I did some market research just to check us, really, to see if we're over-assessing folks. I do do all the sale reviews in the town. I meet people in their kitchen, literally, and sometimes you hear, "We feel we're being over-assessed." A lot of that is due to the fact of their tax bill. So they're a little confused. The increase in the tax bill, sometimes they believe that they're being overvalued. So with that in mind, I did some research, and just as an appraiser, not as the assistant assessor, and we basically use the calendar year 2015 sales to arrive at your 2017 value. That's something a lot of people don't understand as well, where we're 18 months behind the current market trend. And I just wanted to throw some numbers out here, and I did a couple years back, I didn't go back 10 years, I went back to 2015, which would speak to the 2017 assessed values. I did it for all classes of property. I'm just gonna speak to the residential class this evening. It's rather complicated, so I tried to do it as concise and in the most simple terms as possible. So just throw some data here at you. So basically, researching the market, multiple listing service, Banker &amp; Trainsman, I found 363 total single-family sales, calendar year 2015. Again, those were what I deemed arms-length sale transactions. So a little different from the numbers from the assessor's office, I just did my own analysis. So I came up with 363 total single-family sales. I found the median sale price to be roughly $242,000. Again, this is 2015. So the average single-family assessed value in 2017, which was based on the 2015 sales, The average single-family tax bill in 2017 was $4,565. What I did was to find out where we are based on market value as opposed to assessed value. I divided assessed value by market value, and I came up with 96%. That's exactly what we targeted as an assessing crew. So as far as fact-checking our guys here, we were on the money. So in other words, we're stating your value is $231,360,000 for the average single-family assessed value, when truly, the market value for that year, where we came up with that number, was truly $242,000. So we're typically, we try to shoot for a 96% market value, of market value. So I went on to the following year, which affects 2018 values. So the 2016 calendar year, I found 338 single-family sales, and again, arms-length, what I deemed arms-length sale transactions. Pretty close to what we had the year before, 360, so 363. Again, this is my own research. The median sale price I found out there in the market was $258,769. And that was 2016's market research. 2016's market research is how we arrived at the assessed values for 2018. 2018 average single-family assessed value is $248,024. So basically, the market indicated the median was $258,769. Our average is $248,024. Dividing the assessed value by the market value, again, 96%. Again, I did this cold checking on our work to see if we are over-assessing residents, and we are right on target. We are at 96% of fair market value 18 months in the past. So you, I believe strongly, and this is within the margin of error, all these numbers, I stand behind it. I don't think we're over-assessing, folks. I believe you could sell your house or building probably for more than we have you assessed at today. I think we're in pretty good shape, value-wise.
So you also did a little bit of research going in, just so you can understand, as we look into 2019, we have the benefit of looking kind of 11 months into the, because it is December now, so why don't you go over those real quick?
Yeah, so I looked at where we are so far in 2017. I went up to November 1st, that's when I started my analysis. So there's still two, at that time, two months to go with sales. We had 330 total single-family arms-length sales, right in that ballpark, 360, 338, 330 so far. The median sale price, $271,508. And if we base that on a 96% assessment-to-sales ratio, the average value in Leamester for fiscal year 2019 would be $260,648. So again, we're at 271, we're gonna be about 4%. We're giving ourselves a little room in case there's ever an adjustment in the market, so we're not right at the 100%. So again, this was, I did this independently of the assessor's office, just as an appraiser, because I'm always hearing, "You're over-assessing us, you're over-assessing us." Whenever I hear that, I always ask the folks, "Well, what could you sell your house for?" It's always higher than we have it assessed for. Very rarely is it less.
And if it is, then we'll know why. At least we have an opportunity to go out and inspect it, take a look at it for people. There's definitely chances that we may have a wrong quality rating, or a wrong condition rating, or whatever, so we always, we always ask people to certainly come in and see us, ask about your values, because that's what we do. We're about the valuations of your property. We can't control the budget, we can't control how much you get taxed, but we certainly can control to make sure your home is valued correctly, so I...
Just a quick point on that, you had mentioned that the abatement process, which is the only remedy available to a homeowner or any taxpayer that feels they're over-assessed...
That's correct.
...is deadline-oriented. In other words, you have 30 days from that tax bill, and if you miss that, you're out of luck.
That's right. You know, unfortunately, we try to get out there, we try to educate people, and I encourage people that when you get your tax bill, turn it over. There is a, there's a lot of fine print on the back that does explain it. We definitely go out there, and we put it on our website, talk to people every day, Rick's out there inspecting. I certainly, anybody that comes in the office, we try to do that to them, and explain it to them they have that right. And that's why I say it here tonight, you know? If you get that January 1st tax bill, take a look at it. Because ultimately, we are responsible for assessing your property correctly, but we have 14,000 or 15,000 properties in the city. We're not gonna get everything right, so take a look at it. It is also, you know, by state law, that it is on the onus of the property owner to make sure that their tax bill is correct, you know? And it's kind of something that you have to do, you do diligence on and make sure that you take a look at it and let us know, because certainly we could make mistakes. And we wanna fix those.
No, I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to define arms-length. A lot of people watching don't understand that it's a free and independent of each other.
Sure, sure. So arms-length is a typical sale. There's no undue duress by either party. They're both knowledgeable buyer and seller, and acting in prudence of themselves. There's no special circumstances behind the sale. So bank sales, foreclosure sales, those kind of things, those are not arms-length sales and not considered fair market value. So it has to be a regular sale between a regular buyer and a regular seller, and no duress. So that's important, thank you. So looking over the other classes, you know, and I think that was important, Rick did a lot of work, and I wanted to give him the opportunity to explain that to him, to you as well. And I think along with that research, you can see how the trend the last three years is definitely increasing. So as we look, still going back to page 12, and you look down the list, you're going to see the other properties that increased. It's important to note, you know, condominium values went up 8.5% this past year. And the big one was two-family and three-family properties. You look at that right-hand column, that's staggering, 22% and 17%. You know, everybody wants to be in the rental market today, and they're paying a premium to do so, because the rents are up there, profits are there, and it makes fiscal sense to get into a multifamily property and make some money. So those, those sales really increased this year as well. We did see some increases throughout the commercial and industrial properties, some segments and some neighborhoods, so we did that as well. And that's in there for you. The land values.
Bill, one question on that. Are you whacking the in-law apartments? Because the intent wasn't to turn them into two families, it was to be able to allow more than one resident in the property.
So no, they have to be classed as a two-family property, not a single-family with in-law apartment. Those are valued as such. So they, you know, a single-family with in-law apartment is a different market than a straight-up two-family that a commercial investor might invest in. So we do separate out the two. We definitely assess them appropriately, but they're not in the same class.
Okay, thank you.
So the land did increase. Typically, the way we price land in the city is you always have that first acre that's worth, worth the most, and that was assessed at about $73,180 per acre last year. And this year, it went up to about $78,400. So land has increased as well. The excess price on acreage, if it's anything over that first acre, it's considered excess land for private, privacy or utility. That went from $10,600 per acre up to $11,300 per acre. So we did see a lot of price changes this year that we had to adjust, so that's reflective in the raising values. On page 17, switch gears a little bit here, you'll see the tax levy increase over the past 17 years, I mean 15 years, sorry. So you can see each class of properties, the residential tax levy, of course, is the largest part of the levy, because we have so many properties in that class. And then on the bottom, you can see how it increased last year from $65,007, I mean $65,770,481 from 2017, up to $68,813,061 for this year. That is a difference of about $3,42,580 over last year. That's the budget increase. With that being said, there is still excess levy capacity available to us. You'll see that on page 19. We're still maintaining an excess levy capacity, or unused levy capacity, of $5,236,092. And what that means is we have that capacity to raise taxes up and above what we did, but that's taxes that are left on the table for this year.
That's over and above 2.5, right?
That's correct. Yes, it is.
So that's, that's the result of not having gone to the 2.5 increase in prior fiscal years?
That's exactly correct. That's right. Although we're raising 2.5% above because of previous years, that levy capacity is greater, so we're not going up to that levy capacity. On page 22. We're gonna talk a little bit about the growth in the different classes this year. It gives you an idea of what's going on in the city and how values or the city valuation increases. This is property that hasn't been taxed prior to this year, and that's what we consider growth. So anytime someone puts a new addition on their home, that's new tax dollars. Or someone builds a new home, that's new tax dollars. Someone who adds machinery to a business or entity, those are new tax dollars as well. So it's defined as anything that hasn't been taxed on our roll before. With that being said, we saw on the residential side, 38 new residential homes were built in 2016 with a median value of $370,000. In 2017, going to this year, 22 new residential homes were built with a median value of $390,000. So again, a little bit less homes, we're not finished out with this year yet, we still have six months to go, because I cut off as July. And again, a $20,000 increase in those median. So we're still seeing increase in the new home sales as well as market value in there. The commercial and industrial, in 2016, we saw O'Reilly's get, finish getting built. We saw a new real estate law office getting built on Hamilton Street. Saw that finally close out. We saw the new Wendy's come in, King's Corner. There was another industrial shop warehouse, I think that was up on Lanity's Lane, number 80's Lane, someone built the industrial building up there. And then there was another office and shop also built. I'm trying to remember.
Francis Street.
Francis Street, thank you. In 2017, this year, what we're going to see hit the books is another industrial shop and manufacturing facility that went up on, I'm trying to think, it was, I thought that was Francis Street, but it was another large industrial manufacturing shop that went up. Cumberland Farms is gonna hit the books this year, the 110 Grill, of course. Like I said, it's always, people have seen it, and they consider it being done, but because of the timing of assessment, being one year behind, these are the things that are gonna hit the books this year. Next year, we're looking at, or finishing up this year, you've seen the new Aroma Joes down there, the DCU building, another office building that's going up on Old Mechanic Street. As you go past the Sheep, you see a foundation there on the left, that's probably gonna be a three-story office building there. On Mill Street, we've seen the McDonald's get ripped down and rebuilt and being all-new, so that's gonna be a difference as well. So those are some of the areas of growth that we've seen, and of course, machinery and equipment to businesses is always a large one, because, don't forget, with those businesses, we're also talking about the large entities like Verizon adding new poles, wires, transformer equipment, natural gas piping, any of those things that come through the city. Those, that's also considered personal property, and that gets picked up as well on the personal property side of things. So those are some of the growth that we see. As you can see, from 2017, 2018, even 2016, on that table on page 22, all the way to the right-hand column, it's been pretty stable, the growth, $1.2 million or thereabouts, and this year it's at $1.26 million. So it's a little bit, little bit more this year, but we're seeing steady growth patterns over the last three or four years, so that's good.
Bill, do we, do we have any TIFs that are currently coming to their fruition as far as termination, that will be excess money coming into this?
Yeah, so I don't have those numbers, but certainly, we have 108 Adams Street that was finished up. That's at 100% occupancy, thereabouts, so that's a fully valued, and in the second year of their TIF, so they're still receiving a 90% discount on their taxes, but that's a 10-year program, and so as that comes down, we'll start seeing that tax dollars come back in. So that's a good one. Also, AIS, that's a huge special tax assessment. They're down at a 50% level, so we've picked up almost $3.4 million of taxable value in that entity, and then next year, we're down to 25%. So that, that's gonna be huge, you know? That's a $31 million building, and we're starting to see the influx of those tax dollars as well. So that's, that's really gonna come, come to us in the next two years.
Thank you.
Yeah. So what does all this mean? We get down to the end of it. On page 37, you're going to see how this is gonna affect the taxes for the residents here in the city. This is a large table, but it points out all of the tax bills, the average tax bills for each class, commercial, the industrial, and the single-family assessed properties. To break it down, the residential single-family home is gonna see an increase of $229, average of $4,794 tax bill. The industrial, we'll see a $54 increase, still up at $10,043 for an average tax bill. The commercial properties, $41 increase, and still up at $14,069. So now, there's some, some reasons behind the residential class being the largest part of the, of the city, obviously is going to bear a lot of the burden and see, and be affected by most of the tax increase. With that being said, the tax rate that we can estimate at this point, before we submit everything to the Department of Local Services, last year, or this year that we're currently in, was at $19.73 per thousand. That's gonna come down by 40 cents, and it's gonna be at $19.33 per thousand. Although the tax rate is coming down, the budget still increases, it offsets, and you're still seeing an increase. So that's why we always try to tell people that, you know, everybody's focused on the tax rate all the time. It doesn't really mean a whole lot. You know, it's, it's two numbers, it's the budget, it's the total valuation of the city, and it's, that number sets itself depending upon what you people vote tonight.
Where are we with balance? At one time, there was a formula like 80/20 that we heard down here quite often...
Oh, sure.
...between the residential properties and the others, and how that played out. And one of the concerns I always had was that the burden equaled, I did not wanna see a disparity to the point where you got into a situation where the homeowners were paying a higher burden, you know, because it is a partnership with that, factor one.
Yeah, absolutely. If you look, it's probably about 11%, I believe, on the commercial and...
That's what I calculated.
11%? Yep.
11 on commercial and 5 on industrial.
5 on industrial, yep. So, so you can see, in order to lift the burden off of the residential class, which is, I think, 80, 83% or something like that, you would have to shift a lot of burden onto the 16% of the city in order to relieve 80% of the burden on the, on the other classes. That's why when we start talking about splitting the rate, which you can see on...
Page 11.
Is it page 11?
Page 11 has the total values.
Yep.
But that's not the, the split, the rate split, I think's on... But that's not the, the split, the rates split, I think it's on page 28, right?
28. And if you look at those, yep, page 28 it starts, and we've done it for every percent that you want to split from residential onto commercial. You can see what it does to the tax rate. The first column or first row is 1933. That's if you vote a single tax rate tonight. But then as you shift the burden, and if you just jump down to like 5% and 1.05 column that you see there and you follow over, the residential rate goes down to 1913, but the commercial rate goes up to $20.10. And then it just keeps getting further and further apart as we go further shifting the burden.
So because the industrial and commercial base is relatively small in comparison to the whole, it takes a disproportionate increase in their taxes to offset any savings to the residential taxpayer?
Yeah, that's right. There is a summary on page 30, on page 30, you can take a look at. We've done some, a couple scenarios based on the 5% intervals there. And you can see that every dollar reduction in the residential rate is $3.77 added to the commercial industrial.
So Bill, the theory's been historically in Lomester that to encourage industrial and commercial development here, the factor of one is beneficial ultimately to the residential taxpayer because if we discourage industrial and commercial growth, it's going to end up, the burden's going to end up on the residential taxpayer anyway.
That's correct.
To a larger extent.
That's right. By doing that, you start to phase out, I know that, you know, there's a lot of people that contact me from the business entity world, the Chamber, they're always concerned about that. And we see, well, we can see it, and we can see it with our Twin City, with Pittsburgh, you know, them trying to work back to a single rate. They recognize it. They're trying to work back. There was a little hiccup in Worcester this year. They were trying to work back and it was a very close vote, I think it was 6-5, and they actually split the rate again more, which I believe is hurting them, especially when you're trying to compete with a Shrewsbury that's right next door to them, you know, and it's difficult. But I've seen it. When I was in Sturbridge, we were always floating back between a split rate and a single rate, seeing businesses close, then come back. So it definitely hurts the business entity to be at a split rate, taxing everybody at a factor of one. They're paying more because their values are more anyway, so it just makes sense, makes fiscal sense to us. So at this point, you know, I'll open it to any questions. John's here for any calculations as well that you might have on the budget or excess levy capacity, anything like that.
Well, I'll start with the members of my committee. Counselor, shall I pose a, do you have any questions for any of our guests?
You know, I just wanted to go back to one thing. I think it was, in talking about the assessed value, or you base, the market value is the median sales price. It's not an average sales price, it's the median price. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Why would it be the median and not an average? I mean, the median, so all sales are, you know, half of the sales are above that?
It's actually the average median. I did a quick analysis with a multiple listing service banker and tradesman and anything I could find for private sales or...
We typically, when we're doing our analysis, similar to what Rick did with the MLS sales, but our statistics are very similar. He had 338 sales, we had 331. So it's a difference of, okay, we had six or seven sales, we didn't deem arm's length, so those were taken out. But as you look at the median, it's actually considered more accurate when you're looking at data because it doesn't take in those low or high outliers.
Yeah, trying to find the middle zone.
Because that can skew your average, which is your mean. That can skew it a little bit and make your stats a little bit off. So it's better always when you're using statistics or trying to get to a very fine point or more accurate point to use the median. So that's why we typically use it.
Okay, so that's what you did use. I just want to make sure that I understood that correctly.
I did use an average as well, and it's more or less the same.
Okay, there's not a big difference?
No.
Okay.
No, not in this case.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Counselor.
If I may, thank you. The one interesting point that was raised tonight that struck a nerve with me was the fair market value and how basically, you know, you've hit within 96% of the values.
Yes.
And you mentioned how the median is 242, where that's the mean.
Yep.
All right. The only thing that, you know, you know the game better than I do, however, from a consumer point, the first house my wife and I bought was a handyman special. It was very easy to buy. You can't buy a house like that through lending institutions today that easily. So what happens is, you know, they're going to come in with their inspectors and they're going to rip it up to shreds. And if you take a house that's on the market that was built in 1905, for example, you most likely have lead paint in and out. You most likely have a slate roof that's deteriorating, chimneys that are not repointing, chimneys that don't have liners.
Oh, yeah.
And God knows what else is involved there. Nothing was standard. There were no building codes. So what happens is, that person, for example, if they do go to sell their home down the road, you know, if they're fortunate enough, they're going to sell to someone that's cash strong, they can purchase it at a fair market value with those things into consideration, but at the same time, they're getting whacked on the market for their sale.
Well...
And I know one house on Central Street was rejected three times before finally it was sold.
Yeah, and those are perfect examples for people to call us because we have a way to adjust those sales. If that's, if that really is affecting its market value because you go in there and you can't, people aren't willing to purchase that home because of all those issues.
Right.
That's going to affect the sale price, and we want to know about it. So we can certainly go up there, you know, adjust condition factors, quality grade factors. We can put functional obsolescence on those types of properties because there are some repairs that need to be done.
Right.
Especially with more regulation today. When you're buying multifamily properties, some of these, you go over a certain square footage, they're going to start, you know, you start touching and tearing these buildings apart. Now you need a sprinkler system, which is, you know, $30,000. So there's a lot of more regulation. We try and recognize that.
I, I'm a little bit sympathetic to the multifamily investments, but I'm looking at this, I'm looking at, you know, the age of population today, and it's not uncommon for people to be in their 80s and 90s and living in a homestead.
Yeah.
And the thing is, what's happening is we continue to go up on their property year after year as though it's a perfect model and perfect sale price when it's not even being close, you know, to the, so again, and I understand, I appreciate you, you know, you understand that as well, better than I do, I'm sure. But do they have to go through an abatement with you? Is this something they can actually come in and you do reconsideration and go back to the site?
Yeah, so there's a couple ways. Obviously, when they get their bill January 1st, if that is the case, they definitely should come in and see us first. We're more than happy to go out there right away, inspect it, let's get a handle on those types of issues that might exist in the property and see if there is a market adjustment that needs to be made. And then also, it gives us the opportunity to show them what kind of exemptions they might be available to them. We do offer exemptions to senior and elderly, disabled veterans, blind, handicapped, so any of those, and you do have to meet certain criteria, but those are certainly available to those people as well, and we try to get that out there.
And it's important to know that's a friendly process through your staff.
Absolutely.
That's not an abatement process where they end up in Boston having to fight the City of Lomester on these issues.
And the other thing is, too, people need to realize, you know, that it's private. You know, all that information they give us about any income or assets they have is private, it's for IRIs only, it's not available to anyone that's under lock and key in our office, too. So they can feel safe that their personal information is not being discussed with anybody but the board here in front of you.
I appreciate the disclosure, you know.
To your earlier point, the condition of properties, we're always keeping up with by doing cyclical inspections. We also do permit inspections, sale review inspections. We case neighborhoods as far as have we been there lately?
Right.
So we're trying to keep everything on our radar.
Yeah. There's a house on the top of Mary Magd, there was recent, excuse me, on top of Highland Ave that was recently knocked down.
Yes, 204 Highland Ave.
And that house, you couldn't even live in it.
To that point, talked to that girl Saturday, we lowered the value by doing a cyclical inspection from 202,000 to 127,000, just by doing a cold call visit.
Yeah.
No one came in, no one called us. We lowered the value because we didn't feel it was worth what we had it at. We adjusted it based on its condition.
When the house was finally razed, that's probably what the value of the land would be.
It's pretty close.
What it comes down to it. So appreciate that.
Sure.
But, you know, decades ago, not currently, it was always fighting City Hall when it came to your tax assessments and everything. Some of us lived through those generations.
We're much more transparent.
And I, as a ward council, I really appreciate your professionalism, how you work in the community because I don't receive complaints like we did back in the 90s, and it's just fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the council have a question? Councilor Correa?
Yeah, I think you mentioned quite a few properties that were added as new growth. I don't think you mentioned the new bank downtown here. What kind of, what kind of growth is that adding? What's that value going to be of that building?
Yeah, so these are based on timelines. So certainly, we're not even out there inspecting it yet because you see the steel structure up. Our cutoff is July 1st. So we'll assess whatever's there on January 1st and its physical condition as of July 1st. So we try to get as close to that July deadline. We go out every few times to pick up that. So as soon as we get a feel for the structure of the building, the size of it, we'll measure it, we'll judge the quality of it compared to other banks in the city, and then we'll start to look and see with that. At this point, I couldn't answer what that will be worth. Certainly look at what costs are involved, and then we have to try to market value that property. But that will certainly be some more growth as well.
Yeah, the timeline looks like fiscal 19 for that.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. I think I saw Counselor Freed his hand.
There's probably a question that I really don't want to ask you, but are you looking at, paying any attention to unaccepted streets or private streets?
Yes, unfortunately.
They're starting to get a lot of attention.
Hell, yeah.
They're starting to get a lot of attention on bank loans now.
They are. We get complaints in our office every day regarding the streets. It's, it's...
Are you adjusting for it?
It's tough. So we'll adjust for it if it's reflected in the market. So if we start seeing it's no different than you doing a match paired analysis on your 1004 single-family properties, what you're doing is you'll go out and you compare a property that's on a public street, accepted, everything's up to date, versus the same exact property that's on a private street. Is there a difference in sale price? And so we try to recognize that. And we do make adjustments, and that's certainly in the neighborhood or site index adjustments in our CAMH system that we'll do. Yep, so if we, if we see it and it's reflected in the market, there is a neighborhood adjustment, and we'll bring those values down based on those sales. So we're always analyzing that, and so the short answer is yes, we do adjust for those if necessary.
Take it to the next level. I'm sorry.
Being out in the market, I haven't seen the adjustment. I haven't seen it. Crabtree, Commonwealth Circle, I can name a ton of them. Doesn't seem to be affecting the market value at this point. You know, it's more of a hot button issue lately. We understand the importance of them being accepted, but I haven't seen a...
I only asked that because the banks are...
I haven't seen it out there.
The banks are starting to look at that more closely.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think there's been complaints over the, over time.
True.
And to the next level, how about private streets?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Everything. We look at all of them.
Because that's not going to change. The unaccepted street could change.
Those aren't going to change.
The private streets aren't going to.
No, those aren't going to change. Sometimes some of those private streets, you know, again, it is reflected in the market because it might be down by Lake Samoset, let's say, where those are all private roads. But people want to be near the lake, so there's a lot of differences, and we try and recognize those, and it's all based on the research and data we get.
The only other question would be, you know, when you're doing, I know the MLS is pretty accurate, but are you able to get a good handle on the concessions? Because those are, I mean, every other sale's a concession now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I always consider it.
Yeah, we did talk about that a little bit last year when we went through some of the examples of the properties, but we certainly look at the concessions.
I think there are more now.
Yeah. The issue we have is we're always, we're bound by recorded documentation, so we're bound by using that price that's on the deed that doesn't reflect the concessions. But where we target that median ratio, we can make up for that. So that's where it's taken into account.
Any other questions? Counselor Feckley?
First of all, I have very much information that is making the exception. Very good. I mean, it helped people, you know, like me, that, councils like me that don't have a lot of real estate experience to understand the numbers and what they mean. So thank you. So one of the first things that jumped out at me when I looked at this paperwork was on page 37, and you did go over it, Bill.
Yep.
The average single-family property value per parcel, the increase in the 2018 valuation, and then the property tax increasing by $229.
Correct.
So what do we say to constituents that say, okay, well, that's all well and good that my house is going up in value? And I think it's great for the city that, you know, homes are increasing. But, you know, this is the bird in hand kind of situation where people are like, well, you know, now my taxes are going up to average of 229. So what do you say to them, you know, as far as the benefit to them and the city that valuations is going, are going up, although they might have to pay a little bit more tax?
Yeah, so we're, you know, we don't have a lot of control of the budget in the assessor's office, you know. We see a lot of the numbers, we see a lot of that, and we certainly probably get, besides David, we probably get the most complaints in our office, and we get thrown off a lot of properties, and we understand. People don't like paying taxes. What I say to that is it always comes down to a balance of what you want for services in your city. You know, when you start considering, you know, we have 144 million dollar budget to run this city, and you consider your police department, your school department, your FIA, your DPW, if you want your taxes to go down, those are the cuts you're going to have to make. And it's up to the taxpayers, and during budget season, I'm sure there's hearings that you have that people can be involved in, that's where they have to take initiative and be available and talk to those. But in order to bring those taxes down, you're going to have to cut services. That's just the plain truth of it.
But could I just add to that a little bit? And you have to remember, we did only go up two and a half percent. So if you take last year's average tax bill and you times it by two and a half, it's really $114. So your taxes are going up 114. If you're going up higher than that, over two and a half, it's because your value of your property is going up at a higher rate than others. So you're taking a little bit more of the burden. The tax levy isn't going up 228. There's other factors that are coming into, into that equation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
I just want to, sorry, I just want, I think, to really underscore Counselor Feckley's point. I'm looking at page 33, and so as you had explained earlier, Bill, there are really two things going on here. For the average taxpayer, it's a function of, you know, their assessed value is really a direct function of the market, right?
That's right.
Market rates are increasing, so the average, this is the average single-family value is going up 7%.
Yes.
I just did the quick math. And then on the other hand, you've got the city's budget that really informs what the tax bill is going to be. And that is going up, the increase in, or the average family, average single-family tax bill is going up 5%. So on the one hand, you've got, you know, market value's going up 7, and then you've got a city budget that results in a 5% average single-family increase. So those are the two things I just want to be really clear about when people think about, you know, their taxes. On the one hand, it's a function of the market, and on the other hand, it's a function of the services and the level of budgeting that the city provides.
Yeah, and just to further prove that point, just to give you some numbers, I did do a quick analysis on that because everybody always wonders about that. Let's just say, for instance, and we would never do this, that the value of the city does not change from this year, from last year to this year. Let's just pretend that nothing changes and the value stays the same, but we still increase the budget like we're going to. to. That, that results in your tax rate going from 1973 up to $20.64, just by changing the budget, okay? Let's do the opposite. Let's, let's pretend that the budget stays exactly the same, but the valuations do exactly what we're saying this year. The valuations would make the, the tax rate go from 1973 down to $18.48. So, those two things, that's how they affect the tax rate. But what, like, like you're saying, because the budget went up so much, and the values went up so much, they offset each other, and then we end up at 1933. So, that's a good illustration of exactly what you're saying.
Any other councilor have a question before I open up to the public? Is there any member of the public that would like to speak with respect to Communication 21, C-21? Would any member of the public like to address the council with respect to Communication 21? And a third and final time, any member of the public like to speak concerning setting of the fiscal year 2018 tax factor, which is C-21? May the council have an additional question? I would just conclude by suggesting, I think, I think you mentioned it at one point, but just to be clear, that it would be the assessor's position that we should stick with the factor of one?
It's always, it's always to us the fairest way of taxation, and certainly, we've been doing it since 1902. I think you just don't break something that isn't broken.
Okay. With that, I'll close the hearing.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
With one minute to spare.
Okay, that's right. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna start the meeting in just one minute, and then we'll take a recess and, and have the seven o'clock hearing and the public forum at that point, okay? Order for December 11th of 2017. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now take a roll call of the honorable members of the Leominster City Council, beginning with Council Afida.
Present.
Council Dombrowski.
Present.
Council Shafu Zephyr.
Present.
Council Feckley.
Present.
Council Badanza.
Present.
Council Lanciani.
Present.
Council Cormier.
Present.
Council Marshan.
Present.
And I am present. All eight members are present this evening. Does the Vice President have any records to approve this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the Leominster City Council hearings of November 13th, 2017, and November 27th, 2017, and I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Okay, so the Vice President is finding the minutes of November 13th and November 27th to be in order and is asking that they be placed on file. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the minutes for November 13th and November 27th will be placed on file, and I will ask at this time for a motion and a second
Motion to recess.
To recess. Second, Shafu, council. All those in favor of recess, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero. The council now stands in recess, and we still have a seven o'clock hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hearing before the city council, petition 1418. John P. Bulger and Dorothy Rulo and ten registered voters. Rezone the following parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street, from Residence B to Residence A. Pleasant Street, West Side, map 342, lots 12 and 13. Map 481, lots 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Map 521, lot 1 and 39. Map 488, lots 1, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Map 494, lots 18, 3A, 3-1A, 3-2A, 3-2B, and 3-2C. Pleasant Street, East Side, map 561, lots 35A, 36A, 37A. Map 340, lots 1 and 2. Map 410, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 22, and 23. Map 496, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6A, and 7. Map 481, lot 16. And on Low Street, map 488, lot 5. Subsequent to filing the petition, the, the petitioners sent us at least two, perhaps three, requests to amend the petition, to delete certain parcels. We requested an opinion from Copelman and Page as to the proper mechanism to handle these amendments. And essentially, the petitioners, once they've submitted the petition, cannot amend the petition. The council has the ability to amend the petition. So, the question would be whether, you know, we request the petitioners to start over with a brand-new petition, or if we amend the petition ourselves. I did speak to Mr. Bulger, who is one of the named petitioners, and indicated that, given the circumstances, I thought that it might be best if I met with him and put the amended petition together. And then, once we have the amended petition together, we can seek further recommendations from the various department heads, because I think a lot of the initial recommendations we got back were based on the initial petition. So, now that we're going to be amending it and deleting parcels, we want to have updated and, and better information. And if we, also, you know, there'll be a new council starting in January, and given the circumstances of a, of a rezoning, it probably is better for the petitioners to attempt to get a supermajority from nine counselors versus eight counselors. And there was a concern about the costs of advertising. So, I indicated that we would try to take a stab at amending it so that we could perhaps save the petitioners that cost. So, I, I think the order of business would be to further time and reschedule this public hearing. In the meantime, we'll meet, we'll get an amended petition. The council can act on a proposed amendment and vote it up or down. If we amend the petition, then we can take action on the amended petition. If we don't amend the petition, then we can take action on the original petition. But given the circumstances, I think that's the best way for us to go at this time. I did speak with Mr. Bulger, like I said. He agreed with that, Mr. President. So, I would just go to my committee and make sure that they're all in agreement with that as well. Council Afida?
I agree with that.
Council Marshan?
I agree, through the truth.
Council Badanza?
It was a great summer of the situation.
Thank you.
I agree with that, too.
Has nothing to do with the Patriots game.
No.
Council Zephyr?
No, I agree.
Okay. So, at this point, if I could just ask the clerk a date to continue the public hearing, too?
You want to do January 22nd, or you want to go to February?
I think, I think January 22nd. January 22nd should be good.
Okay.
Do we have a time?
Yeah, we'll do seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Just so the petitioners know, I, I think we'll do the, we'll do the amendment long before January 22nd. So, we'll all know at the public hearing exactly, you know, what the petition comprises. So, okay, so
We won't have another meeting before that, though.
January 8th.
Do we?
Yeah. So, at this point, we'll close the public hearing for tonight and continue it to January 22nd, 2017, at seven o'clock.
Okay. Okay, we are now going to hold a public forum. The public forum is to allow any person in the audience to speak on any matter listed on the council agenda. The members of the city council will not be answering any questions, but will be listening to the opinions expressed by the speaker. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. And at this point, there is one person that has signed up, Dorothy Rulo. If you'd like to speak, you can step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dorothy Rulo. I'm 54 Low Street, Leominster. I want to thank you very much, Mr. Dombrowski, for trying to organize this and try and get us together so that we can come together. This is the second time that we have come before this council regarding this piece of area, this neighborhood. And I, I just think that when you say that there's John Bulger and Dorothy Rulo and ten registered voters, we gave you four pages of voters, of, of people, residents. And do any of you live in this neighborhood? Do you know the area at all?
Yeah.
Have you seen the construction that's gone on in our neighborhood because we lost at that first council meeting? And this is why we wanted to protect our neighborhood as best as we can. And I thank you for trying to help us with this matter. And I look forward to January 22nd and discussing it further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, that is the only person that has signed up. So, I will ask, would any member of the audience like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm actually not a resident. Should, do I need to?
That's fine. You just state your name and address. That's okay.
Okay. I'm Mary Beth Jansen's 20 Cross Street in Ashburnham. I'm actually here tonight representing the Community Foundation and the United Way on the item on your agenda. I believe it's C-20, requesting that the council approve for the mayor to sign a contract for financing of a, a software license. And this came to the committee in kind of a roundabout way. The financing committee for this program wasn't sure whether or not a city council vote was, was needed. Just wanted to give some real quick background on this program. One of the reasons that we're excited about getting this contract signed is this pricing proposal is part of an initiative that the Community Foundation and United Way are doing. And in signing and going into this agreement, the Pittsburgh Public Schools will recognize the ability to use a $40,000, I'm sorry, $30,000 grant that was given to the Leominster Education Foundation to apply to this program, which will cover the first year of the cost of the program to the community. Part of this program enables, the, the Community Foundation and the United Way will be covering 50% of all the school districts who participate in this program. And it's a program where the pricing was created as a bulk price, looking at all of the communities in the area. It's an incredible program. I understand that the motion is about approving that financing, so I won't sell the product to you. I've done that quite a bit, but I will be here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak at the public forum?
Wendy Weeks, 142 Blossom Street in Leominster. I'm also the city's grant administrator. I'm here to support C-23, which is an appropriation for $597,345. This is for the full amount of the, a full amount of the cost of developing the project at the corner of Mechanic and Laurel Streets. A couple of years ago, we got, or last year, we got a community compact grant for $25,000 to do the design for that. It's two phases, phase one and phase two. The design has been completed for the entire project. This grant would pay for phase one, which is basically the top portion at the corner of Mechanic and Laurel. It would connect Third Street Playground next to the St. Cecilia's area. It's a bit of an unusual situation in that we applied for the grant in July, as we usually do, under the Park Grant for the state, and they're asking us to actually approve this funding before the grant has been awarded. So, I'm just putting it before all of you to do with it what you'd like. But that is the situation that they've given us at this time. I asked this morning again whether or not the, the decisions had been made or what the timeline was for making them, and they could not give me that. I would assume it'd probably be sometime in the next month. But they have given us until the end of the year to make this decision. And so, I'm just, there's no, let me say this, there's no, we're not going to lose any money over this. So, the money, any money we appropriate can go right back into the general fund or stabilization. And if we get the grant, $400,000 will be coming back to the city. So, I'm just asking the council to support that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? I see a few former city councilors here. I think they're, they're here to say a few words. If you'd like, you can do so now. Probably want to get home and watch the game, so.
Okay, Dave Rollins, 49 Brayburn Circle. A couple of things before I get started. Number one, I'm going first in front of Bob, so I'm leaving myself wide open for a comment about being too wordy. My second point is, is I always remember the setting of the tax rate is one of the worst meetings, and the reason is, you know, the headlines tomorrow is going to be city council raised everyone's taxes, even though it had nothing to do with that, but you'll have fun tomorrow. We're here for something that's not explicitly on the agenda, but for implicitly, and that is Council Lanciani's last meeting here as a member of the city council. So, I just want to make a few words if I, if I may. I had the privilege and honor to serve 10 years on a city council with Council Lanciani, and I sat, sat next to him for most of those years. And I know that Jim's a modest person, and he won't speak up. So, I decided that I wanted to say a few comments based on my experience in working with him. I made a list of sort of qualities that I thought were important in the city council, and I just want to go through that list quickly and, and how they relate to Jim. One is integrity. And Council Lanciani is just simply one of the most honest people that I know. And when he gave you his word, that was as good as gold, money in the bank. The other thing that was always important to me was what was the motive for somebody speaking, voting on a specific issue? And sometimes, when you're down here in the trenches, and the motives sometimes get a little bit twisted, and they may not be for the right reason. But I can honestly say over my 10-year period that Jim had one motive, and that was what was the best interest of Leominster, period. The other quality that I, I thought was important was compassion. We're in an era of, era of politics, which is not so nice. There's a lot of I did this and I did that, and there's a lot of people looking for blame when things go wrong. Jim never bragged about himself. He always took responsibility for his vote, and he didn't look for people to blame. He looked for people to help. Professionalism. Gentleman Jim, every day I'd come down and sit down in that seat on a Monday, and Jim would look at me and say, "Dave, how's, how's Gail doing? How's your daughters doing? How's your family doing?" He always had a deep concern for every member of the council. And we had some pretty contentious debates down here, pretty passionate debates. And one thing that I always appreciated, it was never any grudge or leftover animosity. He always cleared the air. And if he didn't clear the air in the meeting, right after the meeting of contentious meeting, then he would get a phone call during the week. And if it was a really big issue, then you got the invite to go to breakfast, and he'd meet you at your local diner. He'd insist on paying, and it was just a face-to-face contact to resolve any issue and move on. So, there was never any longstanding grudge match or problem. Work ethic. Steady Jim. I would just say that, I'll give one example. We both worked, and there's many, but we both worked on the zoning for years. And we first were the two appointees by the mayor to the zoning committee that met for well over a couple of years, on and off in the library, very frustrating meetings. We trying to get things going, and Jim was there at every meeting. And then, there was a special council, a special committee formed from the city council, and we were given at the end a 200-page document to review. And there's nothing more boring, more tedious than going through and reviewing line by line 200 pages of zoning material. Jim actually did the heavy lifting. He was the clerk of that committee. And he came in, we met at the end every week. Those meetings lasted three and four hours at a time. We read that document, and Jim kept copious minutes to those meetings. He showed up prepared for every meeting. I don't think he ever missed one, was never late on one. And he always had the great historical perspective, because we would look and say, "How did this land ever get zoned like this?" And Jim would say, "Oh, yeah, 1960, this happened and that happened." So, he had a great work ethic. And finally, effectiveness as a city council, and I think Jim was an enormously effective city councillor, not because of any passionate speech that he had to give, but because of who he is. He's Mr. Leominster. He knows everybody in town. He's a great listener. And when he came down here and he was part of the discussion, and you were on the opposite side of Jim, you better pay attention, because you knew that hundreds, if not thousands, of people in the city had the same opinion as Jim. And he carried a lot of weight because of that. And I'll age myself a little bit here, but I always remember, and this was my rationale to kind of, if I had to go against Jim. I always remember the Iran-Contra hearings when Ali North was in front of Congress, and he was talking about how the love of God and the love of country and everything he was trying to do to, to support his position. And Senator Mitchell from Maine got up and he said, "You know, I can love God, and I can love country, and I can disagree with Ali North." And that's sort of how I felt when I was going against Jim. I can love God, I can love country, and I can love Leominster. And I can disagree with Jim Lanciani. But I can tell you, it wasn't easy. I used to tell my daughters when they were young, you have two choices in life. You can be a giver, or you can be a taker. Be a giver. There's no better example of a giver than Jim. He has a lifetime of service as a Marine, a dedicated city employee in Leominster, and an elected official. I know from my brief work experience in, with him, that this country and the city are better because of his service. And as a former colleague, a friend, and assistant in Leominster, I want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ginny Tossi, 334 Hill Street, former city councillor. Jim, what can I say? You are the best. You are the most loved person in Leominster that I know. And you have always, you have always been my mentor. And always been my mentor in the 12 years that I was on the council, before those 12 years and after. And I wish you luck in what you do now. I love you.
I want to thank Mr. President for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening, and I congratulate you on your two-year term ending. It's a very difficult job, and I think you did a marvelous maintaining order and class in this body. My friend Jimmy, 16 years together. Spent a few nights at the casino. The man was absolutely amazing with the amount of energy and dedication he had. There are very few people in this world you can call a real true friend, somebody you could depend on, and that's one guy over there named Jimmy Lantiani that I could always depend on. There's nobody, when I was on the council, he didn't say much, emotional at times, but didn't say much, but his vote always counted, and he did everything that was possible to make this city a better place for people to live in. Jimmy, you are an honorable gentleman. You are a friend, you are a colleague, and I absolutely love you. Good luck to you.
Thank you very, very much. Would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Once again, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. Council Lantiani, before the meeting, had asked me, you know, at the end of the meeting, he wants to say a few words. Do you want to still wait till the end of the meeting, councillor?
If I could, I'd appreciate it now.
Okay.
I just would like to thank each and every one of you. It's been my pleasure and honor to serve with you. We've always kept the best interest for the city of Leominster. My problem is I get very emotional, and I think that for the effort, the time, and the work ethics that each one of you put in, and those who have been my fellow colleagues put in, the people who work in each and every office in the city of Leominster, they do one hell of a job. And it's not because of us, but it's because we cooperate and we work together. We can have our differences of opinion, and that's fine, but we always look out for what is the best interest of the city of Leominster. And I'm going to miss that, but I will always cherish the fact that I served with each and every one of you in my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. We certainly cherished working with you for all these years as well. We'll miss you. Council Marshian had, I'll let him say a few words first, and he made something as well, and we'll present that now too, since the former councillors came for shore.
So, just a little something. Come on in here, you guys give it to him. Come on. Come on, Ginny.
We had enough time in there.
This is another one of the city councils, Jim. Three pictures that I thought were pretty special, and even though you're not going to be in City Hall every day, we wanted to bring it to your wall in your family room.
Oh, that's beautiful.
That's great.
Those guys over here, see that, Dave? If you notice, there's a photograph of Jim. It's my favorite one I ever took of him. And it's actually 2008, the White Cross Ceremony at the Veterans Center, and Jim is wearing a tie that was given to him by David Hill's father.
Director Dallas.
Yep. And when Mr. Hill, you know, fell ill and wasn't able to continue the spirit, he asked Jim if Jim would wear that tie on behalf of David. So that's Jim with the tie.
I still have it.
You still have it. When you can't wear it any longer, we want you either to give it to Bonanza and myself at Dombrowski or Cormier, because if you give it to Bob Savatelli, he knows it's worth money, he's going to sell it on eBay.
Not Bobby.
So just a little something to hang in your basement.
That's very, very nice. Basement in one of the rooms.
The quotation at the top, "Thank you, Councilor James Lantiani Jr. for your dedication and service to our community that is fervent grateful."
Thank you, Mr. President.
I guess maybe this would be an appropriate time, you know, if anybody from the council wants to offer a few words or memories about serving with Jimmy, we could do that now before we move into the regular meeting. Council Frida, I know you've probably worked with him the longest.
I'll go first, because Jimmy and I go back a long way before council, a long, long way. He was my boy councillor years ago. We had, and I know he'll tell the story if I don't say it first. We had a water main break on our street about 40 years ago, Jim, I think?
Yes.
At least, pretty close.
Yes.
And being the good boy councillor that he was, he came down to inspect the situation, and we were all out of water. We had no, we knew he was coming, so we made coffee, and we sat at my kitchen table, watching the progress at midnight of the repairs being made. But that was just one small part of Jim. I mean, I think what was said tonight certainly captures who he is. You're just, personally, you're just a really nice guy. You know, you believe in a lot of the same things I do. We have a lot of the same family values. We have a lot of the same church values. We go back a long way on all of that. And I appreciate you as a friend and as a colleague, but more so as a friend, just a person that you are. And we've disagreed. We've disagreed a lot. But we walked out of here and, you know, talked to each other on the way out, which is the way you're supposed to be. You know, we both had our opinions, and, you know, we fought for those opinions. And it was a good feeling to walk away after everything was over. But, you know, you just, you have been a real treasure to the city. I think everybody knows it. And just as a note, you have the tie from Mr. Hill, I have the scarf from Mrs. Hill. And we've always had those same things on at every Veterans Day, and they're certainly to be cherished. So thank you for all you've done, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Council Dombrowski.
Jimmy, Jimmy was a wily veteran when I got on the council 14 years ago. But he's a great guy, but Jimmy can get mad. I remember the, when he, the guy who was swearing at the mayor, and Jimmy got up and chased him out of the council chambers. That was, I don't know, it was probably 10 years ago?
Oh, no, a little longer than that.
Yeah? Okay.
Probably 15 years ago.
Yeah, I remember that, though. But Jimmy, a great mentor, a great friend. I've learned a lot about loyalty from you, and I've learned a lot about navigating down here. I learned to duck when you started speaking Italian. But I think most importantly, I learned the true benefit of public service, and thank you for being you.
Thank you, John.
Council Chef Zephyr?
I think... I'll talk later. I'll talk later.
Council Feckley?
Sure. Well, as the newest member, I won't be the newest member for long, but as the newest member, I wanted to tell you that I remember all the things that you said to me at the beginning, and I've kept them with me as far as, you know, my service to my constituency and to the city of Leominster, and they've served me very well. And I also want to mention that my father had four girls, and he never raised his voice well until you really did something wrong, and then he did. And we knew we were wrong, and that's what you're like, Jim. If you raise your voice, we all listen, because we know some things amiss. And my father was a gentleman, and you're a gentleman. And I really appreciate everything you've done for the city, for the council, and for me personally. And I don't think there's anybody that looks better in a Marine uniform than you. And I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you.
We love you.
Council Bedanza?
I got a great seat down here four years ago. Dave Rollins left me with a supply of pens and paper, and much more importantly, I got to sit next to Jimmy the last four years, and I've never started a council meeting with anything but a smile and a salutation and sort of feel fortified every time I see Jimmy and we start. And we go back to the days when I was state solicitor, which is quite a few years ago, and Jimmy was on the council or holding one of his positions in purchasing of veterans. And, you know, I think about, you know, what is the measure of us as human beings? And, you know, he's a great city councillor, and he was great at every position he's held in the city, loves the city. There's no question about that, and as Council Rollins said, he was an effective city councillor. But more than that, Jimmy's a great man. And there is no one in this city that loves Leominster more than Jimmy, and that comes from that type of character that he has. We'll miss him down here, but you're not going far, right? So we're going to stay in touch, all of us. And it's been an honor to serve with you, Jimmy, and in January, I will miss you. There's no question about that.
Thank you, Mark.
And we also have this bottle of water that we've been keeping track of. We're going to, I think Jimmy said, he's going to take it home. But I think we're on about 44 months it's been sitting here. Neither of us knew where it came from, so we just decided to put a Post-it note on there and keep track of how long it could stand there before somebody moved it. So it made it, Jimmy. I love you. I really do.
Council Cormier?
Well, I kind of feel short-changed, because I've had the least amount of time with Jimmy, but I can tell you, when I first decided to run for the council seat, and I first came down, and I had the opportunity to sit down next to Jimmy, and I told him, I said, "I feel like I have some really big shoes to fill with the loss of Wayne Nickel." And he was, they were really good friends, and he occupied this chair. Jimmy told me straight out, he said, "You can't. You can't fill his shoes, but you can make your own way and do your own thing." And he told me then to pay attention to my constituents, to ask when I needed help, and to follow my own heart, and I would find my own place on this council. And that's what I'm trying to do.
You've done it.
And as Council Bedanza said, "You're not going far, because I have a lot more questions for you, and we'll need your advice and guidance." So, thank you, Jimmy.
Council Marshian?
Is Savatelli and Rollins still in here? They're gone.
They're gone. I don't want to hear this.
They're probably all in the parking lot, arguing about the tax classification rate tonight, I'm sure. What a great job he did, and what a great job you've all done, you know, giving kudos. Jimmy, you're kind of, you're not going away. This isn't a eulogy. This is a celebration. And we hate to tell you this, but very much like the Catholic Pope, I'm Catholic, you're kind of with us until, you know, the smoke goes up the chimney and a day goes by, because we're going to be looking forward to you watching what's happening and continuing to mentor us and guide us. And we know that the challenges are never-ending, and, you know, you've always been able to stand up to them, so we appreciate you keeping an eye on things down here for us and for the future as well. My first real relationship with Jim came back to when I was working for the Board of Health, and he was the Assistant Veterans Director. And then after that, later on, the Veterans Director, and then with the 250th anniversary of the town of Leominster, not the 100th of the city, but the 250th, where him and Victor Ledger and my wife and a lot of people got involved with the Miss Leominster pageant and the parades and everything, just what a, what a top-notch organizer. Oh, my God. You know, that old textbook style that could get things done. And like Mark alluded to, you know, the incredible amount of notes and everything during zoning, you could always count on Jim. How many times have we seen him pull papers out when we get stuck on an issue, and he's right there with the institutional memory that sometimes lacks? It's just amazing. But most importantly, as a human being, there can't be anyone finer. There's just no question in my mind. And I think everyone recognizes that tonight. You know, the type of person you are, you've been to all of us and our families as well, during good times and tough times, too. So we look forward to working with you from a different, on a different angle. I'm excited you can finally retire and Monday night spend it at home, enjoying your family and everything, but we'll be by to see you. We'll be looking forward to you as well.
Anytime.
So thank you for your mentoring and your friendship. We all love you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the kind words.
And you know, my thoughts about Jimmy are, you know, I call him the man with many hats. Not only were you a city councillor, you were the veterans' agent, the parking clerk, purchasing agent, I don't know, maybe I'm missing some?
No, dear.
Is that all of them?
No, but that's all right.
Okay. So I, I call you the man with many hats, and you know, my first, you know, memories of Jimmy, Jimmy seemed like, I'm close to 40 years old, and it seemed like everywhere I've ever been since I was a kid, Jimmy was there, whether it was a Memorial Day Parade or, he was just the man that I saw all over town. And my former neighbor was the captain of the police department, Ray Prevell, which Jimmy was very good friends of. So when I was a kid, out riding my bike and playing in the neighborhood, I always saw Jimmy riding up and down my little cul-de-sac, visiting Ray. So those were some of my first memories, long before I'd ever imagined that I'd have the pleasure of serving with him, you know, on this city council. And you've been a mentor and a good friend. Even though we're a couple of generations apart, I consider you a friend, and I'm certainly going to miss serving with you and all of your knowledge and wisdom. And for the past couple or a few years, I've picked you up for most meetings to come, you know, back and forth to City Hall, so you wouldn't have to drive, especially in the winter. And those conversations from City Hall, home, and vice versa, we probably resolved more in those two minutes than most people could resolve in an hours-long conversation. And I'm certainly going to miss those, and hopefully we'll have some short meetings over the next many years, and maybe I'll still have to take a turn up Sylvan Avenue and stop in and say hi after some meetings. But I'm certainly going to miss seeing your face and working with you, and I wish you all the best, and I'm sure we'll get together and do breakfast and still see each other quite a bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, each of you. Thank you. Just one, I can see my daughter watching me on TV in Colorado right now, because she watches every meeting, and she calls me to make sure that I'm doing the right thing. I can see my wife watching it and saying, "I told you not to cry."
She's crying right now, because she just gave up Monday Night TV while you're down here.
It's just, it's something that, it's just that I'm an emotional fuller at times, so...
Okay.
I get over it.
Okay. All right. At this time, unless everybody needs a minute, everybody good? Okay, we'll move right into the...
Okay, we'll move right into the, we'll be back in session, and we'll move right into the meeting, beginning with Communications. C-23, Madam Clerk.
C-23, relative to the appropriation of $597,345 to the Recreation Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
And C-23 will be referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President, first time on the agenda. Regular course, please.
C-23 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-24.
C-24, relative to the appropriation of $14,300 to the Highway Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
C-24 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, please.
C-24 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, 19-18.
19-18, David R. Cormier, places stop sign on J. Avenue against southbound drivers at Beth Avenue.
19-18 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral from the traffic agent at the Lomester Police Department.
Okay. And 19-18 has been given regular course, with a referral to the Traffic.
Mr. President, also, just to follow up on that, you may want to check with the city solicitor. Those streets are not accepted. Since I've tried twice to get those stop signs up, and even a safety fact that they won't put them up. So you might want to check because I know you probably won't be able to do it.
Okay. Yeah, if you want, we can refer this to the city solicitor.
That's not a bad, that's not a bad thought. So we can add the city solicitor to that as well.
Okay. All right. So 19-18 has been given regular course, with a referral to the Traffic Division of the Police Department, as well as the city solicitor. 20-18.
20-18, David R. Cormier, places stop sign on Beth Avenue against northbound drivers at Debbie Drive.
Okay, 20-18 is also been referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral from the traffic agent of the Lomester Police Department. And I would ask, is this a similar situation? Okay. And also, a referral from the city solicitor.
Okay. So 20-18 has also been given regular course with a referral to the Traffic Department of the Police, the Traffic Division of the Police Station, Police Department and the city solicitor. Moving on to matters before the city council, items under Ways and Means, beginning with C-18 is the Chairman, sorry, the Chairwoman, ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, C-18, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, exempt Greg Chapton Lane Purchasing Agent from the Conflict of Interest Law as provided for in MGL Chapter 2, 68A, Section 20B, as he is currently employed by the City of Lomester as the purchasing agent, and will be taking a position with the City Clerk's Office for the setup and breakdown of election equipment. And from what I understand, this came about from a need after one of our elections for some of the equipment to be taken down and removed from the sites. And the City Clerk has an interest in Mr. Chapton Lane being able to be basically on call if this happens again. He had also completed a disclosure of financial interest by a municipal employee, and we all have a copy of it. So I feel as though this is, this would be fine use of his time if necessary, and I would suggest that it be approved. And I would go to my committee.
Counsel Marshan.
Through the.
Counsel Nancy Hanny.
Through, correct.
Okay. So it's a unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-18. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-18, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-18 has been granted. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, beginning with C-19. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 19, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, authorize the mayor to acquire by gift indoor eminent domain for no consideration, for general municipal purposes and/or active or passive recreational purposes, the parcels of land located at 15 Narcissus Road and Olive Road, and described more particularly in deeds recorded with the Western North District Registry of Deeds in Book 7543, Page 78, and Book 7543, Page 67. We've got a bunch of recommendations back, including a letter dated December 6, 2017, from Marco Bengrazi, the Conservation Agent. Dear Ms. Bouchard, is addressed to the City Clerk, the City of Lomester Conservation Commission appreciates the opportunity to comment on this potential acquisition of land. I will include several points that the city council should take into consideration when discussing the acquisition of these parcels. Number one, map 473, Lot 3891, currently has a dilapidated home on the property. Number two, there are many large pine trees on these parcels, most of which have residential homes and utility lines within their fall radius. Number three, the use of the Lake Samoset Parkland falls under the purview of the Lake Samoset Property Owners Association. Attached for your review, you will find the Lake Samoset Property Owners Association rules and regulations. This document is available on their website. Overall, it is the opinion of this office that these two parcels of land will be of significant recreational value to the residents of Lomester. Sincerely, Marco Bengrazi, Conservation Agent. We also have a letter dated December 11, 2017, from Kristen A. Kelly, the Director of Planning and Development. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on December 4, 2017, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend that the mayor be authorized to acquire by gift indoor eminent domain and for no consideration the properties listed above. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office. We also have a letter dated December 11, 2017, from the City Comptroller, John Richard. In this letter, he addresses two issues, including this petition. Members of the council, the following two petitions refer to the City Comptroller for a recommendation. I'll skip over number one, which doesn't pertain to this petition. Number two, the acceptance of parcels by the city for general municipal purposes and/or active or passive recreation purposes. The treasurer-collector has determined that as of this date, there are no outstanding amounts due to the city for this property. The City Comptroller would recommend that the city fully understand the cost associated with ownership of the property as to the cleanup of the sites for any use intended. Respectfully submitted, John J. Richard, City Comptroller. I believe that might be... Oh, yes, we have one more. We also have a letter dated December 4, 2017. This is from William B. Mitchell, who is the Director of the Assessors Department, the chief assessor. Dear Legal Affairs Committee members, the owners have no interest in repairing the Camp property that is suffering from deferred maintenance, and would like to donate the above-mentioned properties to the city. I personally inspected the property on Friday, August 25, 2017, with the Building Commissioner, Conservation Agent, and Board of Health Director. The Board of Assessors determined the assessed values of these properties at $85,200 and $5,800, respectively. Based on my recent inspection and professional opinion, the Camp property should be demolished or totally rehabilitated. Please see the attached map and field cards for additional information. If you have any questions or need additional information, please feel free to contact me directly. Sincerely, William B. Mitchell. And, Mr. President, if I could just inquire of the City Clerk, I don't believe we got a recommendation back from the Board of, the Director of the Health Department? I'm not sure. I didn't see one, but...
We've got one from the building, and treasurer.
No, I don't have the building inspectors.
So, oh, we do have them.
You didn't get the health of the ZBA.
No, no, those are the two we're missing. Okay. So we have a letter dated December 1, 2017, from the Building Commissioner. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated November 28, 2017, requesting my recommendation on petition C-19 to acquire parcels of land located at 15 Narcissus Road and Olive Road. These parcels are zoned for outdoor recreation and would be beneficial for the city to own. I am in favor of this petition, and it is my recommendation that we obtain these properties. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Niall, Building Commissioner. So at this point, we're missing two recommendations. So I believe the proper course would be further time to get those two recommendations. Also, if we could just ask the Building Commissioner to expand on his recommendation as to what is going to be involved in cleaning up the site, and if there's any hazardous material present, or any further inspections the city might want to do before we take over ownership and responsibility of same. And then, Mr. President, I'd like you to poll my committee to see if they have any additional thoughts on this.
Counsel Frida.
Yes, I do, as a matter of fact. Having represented that whole area for 16 years, there's always been a bone of contention with the Lake Samoset Association in terms of who can use the area, depending on who the board of the association is. They go from an extreme on occasion, and it's not being a criticism, they're right, it's a private area, to not even like kids fish in the lake. Other times, they're a little more relaxed on the rules. I think it's pretty important to find out what their opinion is. I think we need to send a letter to the board, Lake Samoset Association, because if we're going to take this over, and people can't pass over the streets to get to it, are we accepting it for the use of just the Lake Samoset Association? I'm not really supportive of doing that. I think there's got to be a little bit more to it than that.
All right. I think that's a good point. I think we can get a letter over to the Lake Samoset Association.
If you look at the rules and regulations that are, that were submitted to us by the, and thankful for Marco Bengrazi for sending these down, and you can see they can be interpreted however they like to interpret it. And if we own the land, and you can't get to it because you can't pass on those streets, that's, and who do we want, and who does the city want to be able to use that?
Okay. Well, that's a good point, you know, and we'll get the answers to those questions. Counsel Marshan.
Through the chair, if I may. Great question raised. And I'm concerned about the same thing. I had a chance to walk that area in the last couple of summers, and it's, the roads are horrific. You know, the other concern I have is what's going to happen to the land if the city acquires it and is now responsible for it? Is it open space or recreation plan? Is the Recreation Department involved with this? And if so, are they going to work to try to cut some kind of an agreement for passive recreational use with the Samoset Association? The other part, too, is I'm concerned that the House may have a septic system on it.
Probably not. It's old.
What's that? Through the chair? It doesn't have one?
I wouldn't think so.
Can you just make sure that's qualified?
Yeah.
You know, to make sure that there is no septic that failed that we inherit?
And they probably use propane, so I'm assuming that nothing's buried, but I think it's something we should check out.
Right. I mean, we really have, it's sensitive, you know. It's always nice to acquire open space, but recreation is also part of it. So if we're just buying the land, to buy the land, that's one issue. If we're buying it because we have a purpose for it, I'd like to have that a little better defined from my seat. Thank you. Further time's a good idea.
Okay.
Through the chair, the Assessors' Office says that it's all public, but I'm going to think not. And he's still, he's still sitting here, but I think that was just a mistake on there.
Counsel Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yep, thank you very much. I agree with further time, but what I want to know specifically is what the cost is associated with either the cleanup and the demolition, because there are costs one way or the other. You know, either we dump, you know, demolish the building, that has a cost to it, and any other cleanup. So I want to know what the plan is and what the costs are associated with the plan.
All right. Counselor Badanza.
Yeah, expanding on that, I think the, if the plan is to use this for passive recreation, the precise issue, and Counsel Frida hinted at this, is assuming that the roadway to access the property is private, the question then becomes if the city acquires it and opens the property to the public, does that constitute an overburdening of the easement right to access the property, which is a legal question that would have to get resolved? I think, I'd want to know the answer to that before we make a decision.
Okay. All right. So it looks like a unanimous decision for further time?
Yep. And just to summarize real quick, we're waiting on recommendations or referrals from the Health Department, or the Health Director and the ZBA. We're going to ask for a letter to be sent to the Lake Samoset Association relative to being able to use the road, and also relative to exactly what passive recreation uses we can make of the property. And we want the Building Inspector to expand on his letter, including septic issues, if there's anything buried there, and what the anticipated costs are going to be involved in cleaning this up. And I don't know, Counsel Badanza, if you're thinking of a letter from Copelman and Page relative to the easement, or is that premature at this point?
I think, I think I'd wait. I don't want to spend that money until we clear up some of these other things, because if they're non-starters, then we may have...
Save on the money.
Yeah, we'll save the money.
Okay, I agree. Counsel Frida.
Yeah, I think to the Samoset Association, I think you need to expand a little bit and ask them what they would want us to do. And I do believe there's no way to get there. The access, I mean, we had an issue years ago, and it has to be at least 25 years ago, that there was a chase by police on that, in that area, chasing a teenager back to his home that lived up there. Counsel Nancy Hanny would remember that. Went through the courts. I mean, he crashed the car in front of his house on the road, and it went through the courts, I believe, and found that it had to be thrown out because it was on private property, essentially, because those roads are private. So there's no, there's really no access there. So I think that's going to be really determined as to how, there wouldn't be a way to get there. So Lake Samoset's got to have an approval in there somehow.
Okay. I think that can be accomplished.
If I may, through the chair, if I may, to the chairman. So C-19 specifically says general municipal purposes and/or active and passive recreation purposes. To me, that's either conservation or recreation. So I would like to know who's going to be the intended department that's going to maintain this once it is acquired by the city, and also manage it as well. So that's really kind of like a key element. You don't want it to be in limbo to the point where nobody wants anything to do with it, and then we run into problems with the neighborhood not being able to keep up our part as a parcel that we own in a very sensitive recreational area.
Okay, we can ask the mayor.
Thank you.
His thoughts on that.
General municipal purposes.
What's that? Counsel Frida?
I'm just saying, it was pointed out, general municipal purposes would be in everybody. And if you can't get it, get to it.
Right, right. It's a problem.
All right. Well, we'll ask the mayor what his intentions are, if we could also with an email.
Okay.
And then, having said all that, the recommendation is further time.
Okay. So you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give C-19 further time. Is there any discussion? Counsel Fuchley.
I just wanted to ask a question. Would this come under the auspices of the
Would this come under the auspices of the ordinance that we just passed where butters would need to be notified that change was going to be happening in their neighborhood?
No, because we're not rezoning, yeah. It's just change of ownership.
Okay.
This would be a change of ownership, which, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on C-19? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving C-19 further time, please signify in unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-19 has been given further time. Moving on to C-20, items under Legal Affairs, is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, Communication 20, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Authorize the mayor to enter into a lease purchase agreement for a perpetual software license agreement from Footsteps to Brilliance, with financing through Government Capital Corporation. We received a letter from the city treasurer, David LaPlante, dated December 4th, 2017. In reference to Communication 20, I have looked at the materials provided by former Superintendent Jollicar regarding the lease purchase of software from Footsteps to Brilliance. I have also run it by Attorney Giorgio and have included this excerpt from his email. I agree with the superintendent that the software may be acquired under the sole source provisions of 30B, because it is educational software, as that term is used in General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 7. There is no dollar limit for sole source procurements of educational software. The school department is planning on entering into a five-year lease purchase agreement. Pursuant to the Municipal Modernization Act, a lease purchase agreement can only be entered into upon approval of the city council by a two-thirds vote. See General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), which provides, Section 21(c), "A city, town, or district may, by a two-thirds vote of its legislative body, if recommended by its chief executive officer, authorize any department of the city, town, or district to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement to acquire equipment or improve a capital asset that may be financed by the issuance of debt under this chapter or otherwise authorized by law for a term up to the useful life of the property to be procured as determined by its chief executive officer. Any lease purchase financing agreement under this section shall be considered a binding obligation of the city, town, or district, as if it were a debt authorization under this chapter, provided an appropriation available for the purpose has been made in the first fiscal year in which the lease becomes effective. Any city, town, or district that follows the procedure in this section with respect to entering into a lease purchase financing agreement for the procurement of any personal property for the governmental entity may refinance the purchase with the issuance of refunding bonds under Section 21(a) to pay the balance of the lease obligation. Please note that the mayor is required to recommend the lease purchase prior to the city council vote. The council vote should specify that it is a five-year lease purchase, and it must pass by the requisite two-thirds vote. I have no objection to moving forward with this lease purchase. Please let me know if you have any other questions. Sincerely, David R. LaPlante, Treasurer/Collector." And by the way, the recommendation is coming down from the mayor. We also have a letter dated December 11th, 2017, from John J. Richard, the city comptroller. With respect to this particular petition, he writes, number one, "Footsteps to Brilliance lease for School Department, the financial procedures have been received by the city solicitor. It is the wish of the School Department to enter into this agreement. The city comptroller recommends the petition be adopted." I, I think this is a cost-saving measure to get it for a longer period of time. I, I personally don't have a problem with it. I don't know if this is something that has to be done by the end of the year. I think, my memory is this, the speaker is nodding, it needs to be done by the end of the year. I would just, I'd propose that we vote to approve Communication 20 on the condition that we get a letter from the acting superintendent that she's also in favor of this. I think that's how I would approach this, and I'll look for some feedback from my committee.
Counselor Frida?
I do, I'm sure it is a formality. I mean, this is really a decision of the school committee, and the school department, obviously, if they've researched it, the only input we have is we need to be, they need to come to us for five years. So, I absolutely support it.
Counselor Marsham?
I'll concur.
Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr?
You know, I do support it, but I just want to point out one thing. In the mayor's communication, C-20, he says, "I respectfully request that the city council vote to authorize the mayor to enter into a lease purchase agreement for a perpetual software license agreement from Footsteps to Brilliance." So, is it a five-year lease that we are approving, or is it a, he's asking for perpetual?
If I may, Mr. President, I think when we take the, when we formally take the vote, we just have to specify, as the treasurer said.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, then I support it, as long as we are explicit.
Counselor Badanza?
I'm in favor.
No, I just, is the Legal Affairs Committee in favor of, my suggestion was we vote to approve this on the condition that we receive a letter from the acting superintendent that she's in favor of this, or are we just voting to approve this without any condition?
Counselor Frida?
Through the chair, I would think that the mayor probably spoke with her before it came down. I would, I would, well, I would think that he would, the school committee would...
Perhaps, I don't, I don't know. I just, that's, that's my, that's my feeling, but I'm not going to hold, I'm not going to hold it up.
We're only doing the five years, the mayor still has to authorize it. We're not, we're not doing it, we're just granting the five years.
So, you're comfortable, just, just cap flange? Counselor Marsham?
Through the chair, I'm not going to balk at a request from the school department, because it wouldn't be in front of us if they didn't need it. Perpetual throws me off a little bit, too.
We're just, the problem is, we don't, it's not coming from the school department.
Right, right. As a member of Legal Affairs, I would like to have known what the dollar value is, and I didn't see that anywhere unless I missed it. And what the significance of going into that type of a security would be in an agreement with that company. Not that we're going to micromanage it, but quite frankly, you know, you could buy a computer today, and in three months, it's antiquated, and it needs upgrading. So, this software, you know, I have questions about the software itself that are completely off my radar, but I respect the school department's position on it, that they want to move forward with it. You know, I just, I don't like getting into any type of long-term contracts at this point with, for the school department, but I'm going to go along with it.
Counselor Frida?
Well, this is so important, I'll make a motion for a recess, so we can get information from, you know, the women that presented.
Second, all those in favor of recess, please signify in unusual manner.
It's a good idea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, counsel now stands in recess. Counselor Frida, you have some questions?
If I can speak to the questions that are already raised.
You can go to the podium.
If you can step up to the podium, that'd be great.
Yep.
Wait, you're going to start it? You're going to start with the questions, or can I?
No, go ahead.
Okay. All right, so you heard concerns. The, so perpetual, five-year, upgrading, additional cost, what does it cost for this program? In your presentation earlier, I believe in the public forum, you spoke about how it's also reaching out through to other communities as well?
Yes, the Community Foundation and the United Way are creating, along with Fitchburg State and the FLAC Collaborative, as well as Mount Wachusett Community College, all those together creating an innovation zone around literacy. So, all of the school departments, Footsteps to Brilliance, which was already, it was piloted in Lemonster, and also in Fitchburg. Fitchburg, when they instituted, when they were getting ready to launch their full thing, they came to the Community Foundation, that put them on our radar at the same time that Lemonster came, the Lemonster Education Foundation came to us looking for money to support them bringing that onboard. At that point, the 30,000 that they were requesting was about 38% of what their cost was going to be at that present time. In the negotiations that we did with Footsteps to Brilliance, they gave us a, basically, a quantity price based on the entire number of children in the 17 school districts that are contained within the Community Foundation, so that pricing was based on 21,000 students. And then, as part of that, the Community Foundation and United Way are offering grants to all of the communities that are joining the, this innovation zone to pay 50% of their costs over that, that five-year financing term. The perpetual license, in a normal situation, the general practice for Footsteps to Brilliance, the product has about a five-year life. It is an extremely, they are a very cutting-edge program. We've, our Board of Directors, as well as the Board of Trustees for the Community Foundation, have had numerous, we've had numerous meetings with the creator, the mayor has been involved in those meetings. The school department did completely vet that. To illustrate the kind of discounts that this creates, as I said, the Community Foundation granted Lemonster Education $30,000. Again, that was going to be 38% of their first year. Under these new pricing, which is basically a deal, but kind of get in on the first floor, when they come in with that, their cost with the United Way taking 50% of that allows for them to use the first, they will use 19,000 or approximately 20,000 to make the first payment in the first year. The remainder will roll into the second year. So, year one and part of year two are already paid for. The perpetual is that the community will own the license, and this, the research and such on that information, there were other several financing options that the communities could have taken, but part of the, the financing option was made to allow that the school districts could make their first payment in the new fiscal year, which allowed for the districts that had to do that to schedule for the new year to be able to participate this year. All the communities that sign on can begin launching the program immediately in January, and at which time, any that sign on, the Community Foundation and the United Way will begin our outreach to the community, because the other piece to this is that under this specific initiative, the product will be available to any resident in the town of the existing, of the participating communities, regardless of whether they attend school or not. So, the children from birth to third grade, regardless of whether they're in the school system, so if they're too young to yet be in the school system, or if they're privately schooled or homeschooled, they'll still have access to the program, and that's part of the program that will facilitate. And any children, as they come into the school system, that information with parents' permission can be given to the school, so that they'll have benchmark data on the kids that are coming into the schools.
Okay, now, you did, thank you very much. You did mention 21,000 children, so is that the population of, did you mention 17 communities are involved with this?
Those 17 school districts, they did, the Footsteps to Brilliance did a census. There is no limit on the amount of children, that was just the data that was used for the price. The price is not, we broke it out by child as an illustration, based on that. So, initially, with the grant that was given by the Community Foundation, the cost based on the population was going to be $27 a child, and that was only kids within the school system. This is now going to be $13 a child for the whole community, 50% of which will be reimbursed to the city annually every year.
Does each community participate in the funding of it?
They can, they go through the same process, I've been to many...
So, every, so we just get a discounted rate on it?
Yeah, it's that, you're set into that rate based on being part of, this is the initial, what they're calling a cohort, they're the legacy districts, and they'll be part of the steering committee of this literacy program.
So, five years, four, four and a half years into the program, what happens at that point?
At that point...
On the five-year lease?
On the five-year lease, at that point, there, there's no, nothing is due, there is no need, you own the license, so at that point, you have future use of that license, but that's also from the research, and I'm not in the school systems. The, approximately the life of a, of a literacy program, but it will still have continual use. To continue using that under the perpetual license, the, the company Footsteps to Brilliance says it's usually about a $100, a single $100 fee engaged with the server, but it is nominal.
Are there any fees regarding upgrading of software during that lease?
No, one of the very incredible things about Footsteps to Brilliance that really sets them apart is that any upgrades are automatically given to the existing communities, and they are also, they're the breadth of technology that they cover. They are ready when anything, any new platforms or operating systems or new versions come out, and they'll also support anything that is still supported by the operating system.
Thank you, excellent presentation, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Counselor Frida?
Just real quick, you mentioned Mount Wachusett Community College. What is their participation in this?
When Lemonster first did their pilot through the North of Maine project, Bruno Hicks at Fitchburg State was involved in that project. He was so impressed with the product that he entered into an agreement with Footsteps to Brilliance, and has petitioned the, the school, he's the dean of education there at Fitchburg State, to make Footsteps to Brilliance the curriculum for the education system. So, from this point forward, he's integrating, at the beginning of January, I believe, all of the students in the teaching program coming out of that will have used Footsteps as the curriculum. They have also, as part of the collaboration in this, offered to have their students be part of the outreach and offer activities to go into the schools and participate with the kids, as well as the outreach that we'll be doing within the communities. And one of the, the key things that, while the, Lemonster has a little bit of an edge on the other communities, because you have a few more people as a demographic, one of the key things with low-income families is that, and this is something I say only because I never knew it, that really makes a difference, is that kids from a low-income family, they suffer when they arrive at kindergarten from what's called the 30-million-word gap. They arrive at kindergarten with 30 million words less in their vocabulary than kids from moderate to high-income families, and if that gap is not made up by third grade, they suffer significantly in their ability to succeed in school. So, it's really important, and Footsteps to Brilliance, beyond already the phenomenal success that Fitchburg has seen since being launched, Fitchburg was also given, because they did go into the program before this existed, they have worked with Footsteps to get some compensation, but not financial, that brings them into this group, and their numbers were included as part of that volume pricing. So, when, and to get back to the Fitchburg State, when Bruno Hicks...
I'm actually concerned, I'm a trustee of Mount Wachusett, so I'm trying to make sure there's no financial...
No, actually...
He's going to put me in a conflict.
No, he, that actually was arranged, and I don't know the specifics, but it was at no cost, because of the way it's being used, it, there is no cost to the college, not the university. And having that, having heard of that participation, Mount Wachusett has requested involvement in the collaboration. And I don't know if I addressed, but Superintendent Deacon is completely supportive of this. I've had several meetings by phone already with her and Gina Weirn, as well as, we are going to be using the program in a pilot program we have for volunteering mentors at the Priest Street School. So, it's really an exciting program.
Thank you.
What's that? Anybody else? Thank you very much. Okay, the counsel now stands back in session, and I think we were looking for a recommendation.
Recommendation is to grant Communication 20, and just to get a follow-up letter from Superintendent Deacon.
Okay. All right, so you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant C-20. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in... Seeing none, are those in favor of granting C dash twenty?
I think you need a roll call vote on a two-thirds.
I think you need to um frame it a certain way, so let me, let me redo that. If I may.
Two-thirds vote.
I know it has to be roll call.
Yeah. There we go. If I could have another stab at that, Mr. President. Um the recommendation is to grant Communication Twenty, um specifying that it is a five-year lease purchase um and informing the council that it must pass by two-thirds vote.
Okay. All right, so that's a recommendation to uh grant this with a five-year.
Lease purchase.
Lease purchase, okay, and we'll start with Councilor Frida.
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shaffer Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Badanza?
Yay.
Councilor Anciani?
Yay.
Councilor Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Marchand?
Yay.
And it will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C dash twenty has been granted. Moving on to fourteen dash eighteen.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, Petition fourteen dash eighteen, John P. Bulger and Dorothy Rulo and ten registered voters. Rezone the following parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street from Residence B to Residence A. Pleasant Street West Side, map three forty-two, lots twelve and thirteen, map four eighty-one, lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Map five twenty-one, lots one and thirty-nine. Maps four eighty-eight, lots one, five, six, seven, eight. Map four ninety-four, lots eighteen, three A, three dash one A, three dash two A, three dash two B, and three dash two C. Pleasant Street East Side, map five sixty-one, lots thirty-five A, thirty-six A, thirty-seven A. Map three forty, lots one and two, map four ten, lots one, two, three, four, five, twenty-two and twenty-three. Map four ninety-six, lots one, two, three, four, five, six, six A and seven. Map four eighty-one, lot sixteen. Low Street, map four eighty-eight, lot five. Recommendation uh is for further time. We've rescheduled the um uh the public hearing on this matter, and um I believe next ti- next regular council meeting, uh we'll have an amended petition that we can take action on.
Okay, so the uh recommendation is to give fourteen dash eighteen further time, is there any discussion? Seeing none, are those in favor of giving fourteen dash eighteen further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, fourteen dash eighteen has been given further time, moving on to sixteen dash eighteen.
Mr. President, if I could inquire on sixteen eighteen, seventeen eighteen, and eighteen eighteen, um did we get any recommendations back from the traffic agent? Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see. I, no, just think, given the circumstances, I can just.
Circumstances are kickoff, patriots.
Frida, nothing, all right.
Six.
Not that anyone cares.
Yeah. Okay. Back in session. Uh Petition sixteen eighteen, David R. Cormier, install a stop, a stop sign on Dogwood Road against northbound drivers at Queens Road. We do have a recommendation from Lieutenant Kinney, Leominster Police Department. Sixteen eighteen, install a stop, a stop sign on Dogwood Road against northbound drivers at Queens Road. The police department is opposed to this petition. Dogwood Road has the right-of-way at this intersection, placing a stop sign only on the northbound side would violate this right-of-way and would also confuse drivers. A stop sign at this location does not meet the Uniform Manual on Traffic Control Devices guidelines. Um given the recommendation, I defer to um Mr. President, the petitioner, do you have any thoughts on this or elaboration?
Well, ironically, when I was voting at the special election last Tuesday, um somebody who was working there was talking to me about another stop sign location, so uh somebody in the back of me chimed in, and it was obviously Kinney. So we had a conversation about that and a conversation about this. And uh he basically told me, and I I kind of thought so anyway. I didn't think that I could, we could petition stop signs on Dogwood, just on Queens, but somebody asked me to. So I told him I would and get a recommendation and see what we were told. So I'm not surprised that we can't do this, so I'm I'm kind of in favor of denying this one.
Okay. So the recommendation would be.
Give it leave to withdraw without prejudice, whatever the committee wants to do.
Okay, I I I would recommend that we give petition sixteen eighteen, leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Council Frida, you okay with that?
I'm fine.
I concur.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, Council Badanza? Okay, so it's unanimous recommendation to give sixteen dash eighteen leave to withdraw without prejudice, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh all those in favor of giving sixteen dash eighteen leave to withdraw without prejudice, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, sixteen dash eighteen has been given leave to withdraw without prejudice, seventeen dash eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, Petition seventeen eighteen, David R. Cormier, install a stop sign on Queens Road against eastbound drivers at Dogwood Road. We do have a recommendation from Lieutenant Kinney. Petition seventeen eighteen, install a stop sign on Queens Road against eastbound drivers at Dogwood Road. The police department supports this petition. Uh my recommendation would be to grant petition seventeen eighteen.
Okay, Council Frida?
I agree.
Council Marchand? Council Shaffer Zephyr? Council Badanza?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous recommendation to grant seventeen dash eighteen, is there any discussion? Seeing none, are those in favor of granting seventeen dash eighteen, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, seventeen dash eighteen has been granted, moving on to eighteen dash eighteen.
Petition eighteen eighteen, David R. Cormier, install a stop sign on Queens Road against westbound drivers at Dogwood Road. Again, we have a recommendation from Lieutenant Kinney, petition eighteen eighteen. Install a stop sign on Queens Road against westbound drivers at Dogwood Road. The police department is not opposed to this petition. I do want to point out, the City Assessor's Office GIS database lists this part of the road as Cypress Drive and shows it as being a private way. The office of the city clerk should be asked to verify if this roadway has been accepted by the city as a public way. I don't know if if that's been done, do we, do we know if that part of the road is a public way?
Um that I don't know, but ironically, I had this discussion with the city clerk.
We built that road.
She, she lived down the other end.
I own the house down there. It is Queens Road, even though it's it shows wrong on the, it shows the Cypress. Cypress comes off of Queens.
Okay.
Uh but it is an unaccepted street on that portion.
Okay, um well, I'll defer to the um petitioner, Mr. President, your position.
Well, the name of the road is Queens, that I know. Um honestly, I I I don't know if legally that strip is, i- is it accepted, do you know? You, it's not accepted, so.
Well, why don't we, if I may, why don't we add this one to the list um of the earlier petitions nineteen eighteen and twenty eighteen?
Right, give it, give it further time and ask the city solicitor, in addition to those other two, if it would be permissible to put a stop sign facing a portion of an unaccepted street, and then we'll have a disposition.
Okay, so the recommendation is time, and we'll seek uh an opinion from the city solicitor.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of Legal Affairs, I'm assuming nobody's opposed to further time on Legal Affairs. Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of Legal Affairs to give eighteen dash eighteen further time, uh is there any discussion? If not, are those in favor of giving eighteen eighteen further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, eighteen dash eighteen has been given further time. Moving on to the City of Leominster's financial report. Um Mr. Chairman of Finance, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Um the year began with a balance in the stabilization account uh on July one of fourteen million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um with all of the appropriations uh previously granted, and the ones pending this evening uh referred uh as the first time on the agenda. Uh those total three million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars, which would leave a balance in the stabilization account of eleven million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars.
Okay, so that is the financial report, does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, uh we will move on to items under Finance, beginning with C dash twenty-one, is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash twenty-one, relative to determining the factor to be used in setting the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen tax rate. Um we had a hearing previously this evening um with the assessors, um and Mr. Richard. Um I'll just do some quick committee um work. Um my position to uh stick with the factor of one rate that we have historically, but I'll check with my committee members.
Absolutely.
Through the, I agree.
So, Mr. President, the recommendation unanimous of the Finance Committee is to use a factor of one for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen tax rate.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash twenty-one with a factor of one, is there any discussion? Council Frida?
Just to make a note, we have to do this every year. This, we are not setting the tax rate. Uh people see the two thousand and eighteen tax rate, think that we're setting it. We are not, the time to pay attention is during the budget process, this is just putting the classification in place. So before we all start getting phone calls tomorrow, we are not setting the tax rate.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, uh all those in favor of granting C dash twenty-one uh with a factor of one, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash twenty-one has been granted, moving on to C dash twenty-two.
C dash twenty-two, relative to the appropriation of eight thousand dollars made to the election in registration expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This was granted uh with an emergency preamble. Um at the last meeting, the charter requires a ratification vote this evening in order to finally approve it. Recommendation of Finance would be to approve C dash twenty-two.
Okay, all set? Council Marchand as well? Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of Finance to uh grant this, um is there any discussion? Seeing none, are those in favor of granting C dash twenty-two, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash twenty-two has been granted, moving on to uh is there any old business to come before the City Council? Co- Council Feckley?
I did want to make note, just received, we just received this letter today, December eleventh um to Lynn Bouchard, city clerk, from the mayor, and I just wanted to make note that um I had asked at the last City Council meeting um when the mayor was going to give us an update on the police station. And he does say, in response to the City Council's request for information, I would like to request time during the first meeting in February to update the council on progress on the police station. So I want to appreci- uh tell him I appreciate that. Um I also had a question regarding the school audit um versus a Department of Revenue review that was brought to um to me by a few constituents. So the mayor has attached his letter to the council from July twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen to his letter of today, but because I just received it this evening, I haven't really had a chance to absorb what the connection would be, and I want to read it and then bring this information to the constituents who had asked me to bring it forward. So um I will, you know, report on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other old business to come before the City Council? Okay, we have uh one item under new business, which is a resolution, and um I will ask the clerk, this is the first time on the calendar, I'll ask the clerk to read this.
A resolution to file and accept grants within, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisition and Renovation for Communities Grant Program for a new park at the corner of Mechanic and Laurel Streets in the city of Leominster. Whereas, the French Hill area of the city of Leominster is densely populated area with little open space, the development of the Mechanic Laurel Street area of the city as a new park is a priority, as evidenced in the most recent open space and recreation plan Gateway Plus Action Plan. And whereas, the Mechanic Street Park will greatly enhance the French Hill neighborhood by creating open space for recreational purposes immediately adjacent to the Third Street Playground area and expanding the site's open space acreage. And whereas, the main focus of the park is to improve access to open space for neighborhood families and individuals for picnicking, walking, running, unorganized sports, and general leisure. Whereas, said property is designated as recreational land under Chapter forty-five, Section Three, by deed and subsequent vote of the City Council, and is under the jurisdiction of the Leominster Recreation Department. And whereas, such land adjacent to the current playground has been designated as recreational land under Chapter forty-five, Section Three, by deed and vote of the City Council, and will be under the jurisdiction of the Leominster Recreation Department. Whereas, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support preservation and restoration of urban parks throughout the Parkland Acquisition and Renovation for communities. And whereas, creation of the new Mechanic Street Park will cost a total of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, and the city has allocated five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five through its stabilization account for the purpose of the Mechanic Street Park. Now therefore be it, one, that the mayor be in, is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and two, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purpose, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Leominster Recreation Department, and three, that this resolution to, shall take effect upon passage.
Okay, and this um resolution is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh this is the first time on the agenda, so I would request it to be given, given regular course. It also is linked to C twenty-three, which has also been given regular course tonight.
Okay. All right, so this resolution has been given regular course, is there any other new business? Um I just have a a few items here, I'm gonna be really quick. Um as most of us know, uh per charter, there is not a regular meeting of the City Council uh the fourth week in December. The fourth Monday is actually Christmas Day itself, and then um per charter, we don't have another meeting that week. And there is uh, there is going to be some business that needs to be resolved prior to January eighth. We cannot go a month without another meeting. Um so um I've been in touch with the mayor's office, and I'm going to be calling a special meeting of the City Council. Um we are looking at Thursday, December twenty-first, at six o'clock. Um one of the things, two of the things that are definitely going to be on the agenda for the special meeting are are going to be um C dash twenty-three um as well as this resolution. Uh this needs to be, it needs to be voted on uh by the end of this year. And um so if we, if, if we have a meeting on Thursday December twenty-first at six o'clock, you'd need to put an agenda out um by Monday afternoon, okay? So if anybody has anything they want to petition as well, to have on the calendar for the first time at the special meeting, so then it can be potentially voted on uh January eighth, then the deadline will be noon time on Monday, December eighteenth. Get them into the city clerk. I have a few things myself, since we're having a special meeting anyway, I'm gonna, I have a few things I'm gonna get on the calendar for the first time. And I'm gonna check with the mayor's office prior to um putting the agenda out to see if there are any last-minute financial items or anything like that that they want on the agenda for the first time at the special meeting, so that we can take care of them on January eighth and not have to wait until the end of January. One of the other things that uh has come to mind, and I'm gonna ask the Chairman of One of the other things that has come to mind, and I'm going to ask the Chairman of Finance to look into this, this might be an item for the agenda for the special meeting. Usually every year, we have a petition down here to allow us to deficit spend in the snow and ice account. Have we done that yet this year? I think we got to do that every year. So we haven't done that yet. So we might want to, you might want to check to see if that needs to be done, and if so, it probably should be on the agenda at the special meeting, so we can vote on it on January 8, so that if we have a bad winter, we won't run into a problem, just so that we can by law deficit spend on snow and ice. And also, I'm going to ask the city council if we can take a vote to have Roger Brooks down here at the January, January 8 meeting. I hate to do this to him, I know he was just down here recently, but some questions have come up about the Beth Ave area. Some of the neighbors there want to know where everything stands with sewer lines. They're having some issues with their septic, and I know that Council Frida had worked on a lot of Debbie Drive and things like that, fairly recently, some of the things had gotten taken care of, but I'd kind of like an update about, you know, regarding that whole neighborhood, maybe, you know, a, some kind of a map of the area from Roger Brooks, showing what houses still need to be connected, and, and get his take on whether, you know, we need to look at a betterment or what we have to do there, because some of the neighbors are starting to get antsy with their septic systems. So I'd like to ask the council if we could take a vote to have him down here on January 8. All those in favor of having Roger Brooks on January 8, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, he will come down, and if there's any other things that anybody wants to talk to Roger Brooks about, just get that info to him so he can be prepared. Council Frida?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so that we don't get it mixed up, just wanted to add that the whole Debbie Drive area was part of the Brooks Pond-
Right.
-project. That was all done by Peter Vavazzi to the neighborhood.
Right.
Was it, had, had nothing to do with the city?
Right, no, I understand, yeah. And some of the other neighbors just-
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Right, okay. And that's all I had. Is there any other new business? If not, I will move on to items under the community calendar. Does anybody have anything under the community calendar? Council Frida?
It's not, the future is the past, but I just wanted to point out, yesterday's performance by the Colonial Band is absolutely amazing in City Hall. And for people who don't pay attention to go to these concerts that, you know, are provided in the city between the kids and, and the Colonial Band and the Monarch Uta Corral and so many of them, you know, they don't cost anything, the, the city hall is pretty full, but, you know, it's, it's a real credit, these are our local musicians that work hard to put this on for the public. And, you know, just a, a big, big thank you to Steve Pomerini and John DeChico for managing those, that band for so many years, and the Vashalia family. It's really a credit to that community. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come into the community? Councilor Lanciani.
This way, move from here, here, or anywhere else, let me know, because Mr. Badanza's flying down.
Okay.
Are you taking the water?
Yeah, he's taking the water.
Why keep going?
Does anybody else have anything under the community calendar?
Well done, Jimmy.
Yes, very good.
I would like to take one minute, please, to present you with a plaque from the city council.
This is not on the agenda.
Well, this is, it's too bad, you're getting it. On behalf of the city council, I know even though you're going to give us one more meeting, we would like to thank you for the last two years as president.
Thank you very, very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much, too. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, is there any, anything else to come before the city council at all? Okay, if not, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, seconded. Council Shafu Zephyr, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. The city council meeting for December 11th of 2017 is now adjourned. Congratulations, Council Lanciani.